Hey Pam.
Hey.
You look a little different.
Hmm?
You look a little different.
Hi Pam.
Hi Vic, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. That was a long meeting huh?
Yes it was.
Yes.
Those meetings are...
Hi everybody.
Hi Hope.
Hi Hope.
Hi Hope.
Hi.
I feel home.
Alright. I say that. Hello.
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 Hello. Oh you look nice on the couch.
Yeah it was... It was time.
Yes.
Hello?
Hello?
Dave Burns, I just called in.
Oh I like that ring.
Okay.
That was nice.
I can't get in.
You can't get in.
I was having difficulty also.
We locked you out.
Oh hi Lindsay. Alright Sarah can you give Gary a hand?
Yeah.
Oh am I able to wait?
Oh wait, he's working on it.
I just managed to enlarge it. Yeah okay, I got it. I got it.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
Oh there you are. Oh no that was last week's. Last month's.
Hello Hope.
I didn't see, I think I'm gonna go... I'm just gonna get back with a small espresso, I'll be right back.
Cheers.
Espresso by definition.
There you go Pam.
Oh I'm... I'm good, I got the...
Okay.
We can go all night long, I will.
I just finished my coffee and I'm having a little cold drink. Well look who's here. Mr. G.
How are you?
I'm fine thank you. How are you?
Did anybody besides me get an offer from Totally Promotional for custom-made face masks?
Yeah I think they sent it to the council.
People, it's a whole cottage industry, people are doing it all over the world. There's actually gonna be face masks that have your face like three dimensionally imprinted on it somehow like so that your phone recognize, opens with Face ID.
Whoa.
You don't have to keep going like this and like this.
Wow.
They've invented a mask that actually has your like nose and mouth and recognizable features.
Wow.
How about that?
So you don't have to use your passcode?
Correct, you don't have to touch your phone.
Wow.
That is a little spooky though.
Spooky.
Spooky.
Very innovative.
Hope it's nice to not see you at work. Glad to have you.
Alright.
Are we gonna be broadcasting live again on Facebook?
Yes.
Okay. Does everybody know that?
Yep.
Yes.
So if you don't...
Somebody has to turn their volume down.
Open up Facebook.
Uh oh.
Somebody's gotta turn their volume down or if they have it open and then, if they have it on your phone and the computer
I do.
There's a large echo.
What is Facebook.com, what is, what is the thing Town of Rye?
Town of Rye, yes.
One word?
Well it's a backslash Town of Rye. Facebook.com backslash Town of Rye NY. Even without all that, probably just go right to it.
So
No.
Everyone who has liked the Town of Rye and comma NY, Town of Rye NY Government Organization Facebook page of which there are 619 that number will go will get a notification if they're on Facebook that we're live.
Okay.
What do I hit on the...
So if your computer can split screen, if you can do like zoom to the right and then the Facebook page to the left, you can see the comments coming in during our broadcast.
I can't get on that live thing anyway. It says Facebook.com.
First you go to Facebook, just go to the general, you know, welcome page to Facebook generally, it'll open up to your Facebook page. And then in the search bar with the magnifying glasses, you click on that and you can type in Town of Rye. And Town of Rye are the, our Facebook page, our government Facebook page where we have likes not friends. It's different from a personal Facebook page, this is a business Facebook page where people like it to get to get notifications of you know, things that are, that are happening, it comes across their feed throughout the day if we put, you know, put new posts up.
Well I have the, I have the Facebook page and it says Town of Rye NY Home.
Does it say government or, just hold up your phone to the screen for a second, let me see where you are.
Yep, you're in the right place.
Yeah you're in the right place, so Sarah's gonna start the broadcast and if you refresh your page you know, if you refresh that page, you're gonna, you're gonna see when she starts the broadcast, you're gonna see us, you know, at the top of the feed above the April 17th posting about being counted in the census you're gonna see a new box appear saying you know, we're live, you know, we're broadcasting our, our meeting.
Oh, 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 oh. Look at that. How cool is that?
What's that? But then we're gonna hear it.
So when Sarah says, okay we're live now, I'm, we're streaming. We're streaming live on Facebook.
Hi Lindsay.
Hello.
Refresh your page, you'll get to the, you'll see, you'll see it come up.
Maybe. Okay Pam, Lindsay, me, Tommy, no Tommy. No Tommy. No Jill.
I'm here.
She's here.
Jill's here, oh you're on...
I'm here, you have to...
Oh you're on the other screen.
Put your display on tiles.
Me?
Right hand corner Gary.
I got it, I have it.
You?
I have it.
Okay.
But she's, she's in a different screen than me.
It kinda looks like the Brady Bunch when you have it on.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hollywood Squares.
We are live on Facebook now.
Is Tommy coming or not?
I think Tommy's on the phone.
Yeah there's three people on the phone.
We have three participants on the phone.
One of them is Nick.
Dave. Dave Burns.
Dave, Nick.
Dave, Nick and Sarah are the ones with the phone numbers.
Put your name instead of your phone number.
When you call in through the phone, it doesn't allow you, it's Nick Mecca, Sarah Suma and Dave Burns on the phone.
Oh okay. Okay.
Alright, let's get started. Debbie's got the flag. I'm gonna take a hint from Paul Rosenberg. We're not gonna get up and let the public see our...
Oh thank you.
We're all like Donald Duck, we have no pants.
Okay. Okay, everybody. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands nation under God indivisible
indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clark, would you call the roll please?
Certainly. Councilperson Lindsay Jackson.
Here.
Councilperson Pamela Jaffe.
Here.
Councilperson Jill Axelrod.
Here.
Councilperson Thomas Snarty. And I think he's somewhere. And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
I'm here.
Okay. Is that Tommy's number? Okay we'll check, I'll check it out.
I'll text him.
You, you do your meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, adoption of minutes of March 24, 2020, they have a motion and a second.
So move. I'll make them... I'll second.
Lindsay, it's your turn to move this time.
Oh God.
And if there are no further corrections or additions all in favor?
Hi.
I.
Not opposed. First resolution is to retain LaBella Electric to perform electric service at Crawford Park. Briefly Debbie, what is this about?
In our pursuit of a certificate of occupancy for the picnic pavilion we must hire an electrician to install a number of important safety features that are being required by the building inspector. Those things include emergency lights, an electric heater, outlets, sub panels and we got three bids and LaBella came in as the lowest bid. Lowest acceptable, responsible bidder.
And that's a local company correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Very, very local.
Yeah.
Very board jester. And in fact, LaBella was the subcontractor for the electric on the mansion community center.
Great, great.
Okay. All the roll, wait, wait.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay. Call the roll please.
Councilperson Lindsay Jackson.
Yes.
Councilperson Pamela Jaffe.
Yes.
Councilperson Jill Axelrod.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas Snarty. And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. The next one is a resolution to hire...
Pardon me for a moment, Sarah. Are you still with us?
Yeah.
Tom says that it won't let him in, it keeps telling him that there's a meeting in progress.
Okay I'll resend him the information.
Okay, should he check his email?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do.
And we're streaming.
Are we?
Yes.
Yes we are on Facebook.
We have eight viewers at the moment.
No one's coming.
Mine isn't streaming. How do I make it stream? Well it doesn't matter, we'll go on. Resolution, appoint to retain Bartlett Tree to control invasive species, Debbie what's this one about?
We obtained a grant from the DEC to address invasive species at Crawford Park and Rye Town Park. And it is now time for us to start addressing the varmints that plague our ash and oak trees and Bartlett Tree, it was the firm that helped get us the quotes for our grant application and consistent with our procurement policy, we are engaging them to do the work.
Motion and a second please.
Oh, define varmint?
No, no, no I'm saying impressive use of the word. I haven't heard it in a long time.
If she said it like John Wayne, that would be better.
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
I'll call the roll.
Thank you.
Councilperson Jackson.
Yes.
Councilperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Councilperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Councilperson Snarty. And Supervisor Zuckerman.
Yes, did Tommy answer?
No. Well Sarah is sending him a new link. So hopefully he'll be able to log on soon.
Yes it's been sent, I'm just waiting to see him come into the waiting room.
Okay. Next item, memo to the, memo. Resolution to renew the contract with Millennium Strategies for grant writing. There is a memo attached to the resolution. Debbie, you're on again.
So Millennium Strategies has been working with us now for a year. They have submitted six grant applications on our behalf. We have not gotten three of them, we are waiting for three that are just taking their time because of the times we live in. So we have a grant to repair the path. We have a grant to assist us in urban forestry. Hello Tom, welcome. An application out there and we have an AARP grant for $20,000 that if funded will buy chairs and ta, and gaming ta, well checkerboard tables for the, an area that we are planning to establish right next to the picnic pavilion near bocce courts that
Yes.
we have in the planning stages. So we're gonna wait to see if we get those grants. In addition the federal stimulus that has already been passed by Congress is coming out to municipalities through FEMA and Millennium was very proactive at set up a tracking sheet for us for the expenses that we've been tracking for reimbursement. They opened up a portal for us and have already been in contact with the the regional the regional rep for the Department of Homeland Security who will be overseeing the grants for our region. So that's where we are.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can I just interject, this is not directly related to this. Can everybody under their, next to their name in the upper right hand corner rename yourself and your position so the public knows who you are? So I just renamed myself since town attorney. So I think it'd be helpful for people to know who they're watching.
How do you do that?
You'll like that.
Corner the three, the ellipses, click on the ellipses and you can rename yourself dash dash town board member, town council member.
Where?
In the upper right hand corner there are three dot, dot, dots.
Okay. Curse over your square and the mute and the ellipses will come up.
Isn't that cool?
And how do you, how do you change your...
Hit rename.
I don't even see rename on mine, I got...
Click on the ellipses.
The upper right hand corner.
I got the right, it says more, I got share participants.
Took my name out though. Do you have mute?
Yeah.
My video.
Yeah video.
Video.
Participants and more, then more has got thumbs up, it's got chat set, meeting settings, virtual background, raise hand, disconnect audio. Let me see meetings.
It's saying you're labeled as Tom's iPad.
Yeah I know, that's because of the name of my iPad, okay.
On your iPad.
My title's too...
Figure it out later, I don't wanna, I'm sorry to distract everybody with that.
I'll, I'll, okay, what I'll do is I'll fool with this later.
Yeah.
And I'll get it straight.
I think it has to be done on every broadcast.
Okay. Well I'll rename, I'll rename the iPad, that's all, that's easy enough.
I'm doing it now.
Yeah?
My title's too long Debbie. Let me switch to my other one here.
I'm having the same problem.
Try to keep an eye on everything.
There you go.
You know I just put Town of Rye.
Okay, I can do that.
Can we continue with the meeting?
Sure. If you want to.
Sorry. It's just clear for people.
It's alright.
Okay. So I think we were at Millennium and the resolution to renew their contract. I think there's one other thing I'd like to add and that is that there's a 30 day cancellation clause without cause in their contract, so if we find that this is not productive for us we can cancel at any time.
Yeah, my, my thing is, is like how much is, after all this, it's all the money that's that the governor, government is not making, how many grants are they really gonna be issuing?
You mean after the loss of...
With the loss of everything.
There's a substantial amount of stimulus money and grants that are on the way. It's the ways in which the money will get back out into the system, after the last recession there were actually considerable funding opportunities.
Okay, my question is, what we're paying them, are we getting, are we getting above and beyond grants? You know what I mean, well we're paying them yearly, are we getting grants that cover that cost?
Well at the moment, no, because we haven't gotten a grant that they've applied for. And we're waiting to see about that. However, one of the things that, that we particularly like about the relationship with Millennium is that they are constantly scanning the private and public funding galaxy and bringing us anything that's relevant to us and giving us the choice about whether or not we write, we go in and apply for that grant. And their, their retainer doesn't change, so whether they're writing five grants for us at once or no grants for us, we're paying the same.
Okay. Go ahead.
No I was just gonna say I appreciate the focus on public-private partnerships as well, I think that's a good asset to have as well. And also wanna note that the contracts are done on an annual basis, so we could always go forward per year, we're not stuck for a longer amount of time.
Lindsay, we don't even, we don't even have to do that because we can on 30, terminate on 30 days' notice. So if we find that they're not performing for us the way we want them to, we can terminate the contract.
I don't think it's a question of performing, I'm just wondering if, we're not getting the grants because of wording or forgetting it because we have gotten grants, we've gotten so many grants be, be before and the state is like, you know what, we gave you cer, certain amount of grants where or is it just, there are different levels of the grant? You know? Like, like all the grant money that we had gotten for the pavilion and for the playground and stuff and also for the mansion the community center is the state saying, okay you know, we've given you, we've given you enough money and it's time for another community to get it or it's just...
We've never heard, we've never heard that. Sometimes you have to apply a couple of times because they find things in the applications and they're all, the grants are competitive. That's why you really need grant writers, they're competitive and have to know what the the agency is looking for.
Okay.
So it's not that.
Okay.
We, we have more grants in the queue, correct?
We do.
Yeah.
We have several. And by the way, there isn't a grant that we don't get where we don't have a debrief with the grant administrator to find out. And they, and they do, it's surprising, but they absolutely go through our grant applications and they pick it apart and they share it with us and they tell us exactly what we should be doing in the future.
Okay. Well I like the idea that we have the 30 day clause too, so that's, I was just trying to find out just a little bit more information, that's all. I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Alright. Thank you, did we, Hope, did we have a motion and a second on this?
No.
I'll make the motion.
Motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Please call the roll.
Councilperson Lindsay Jackson.
Yes.
Councilperson Pam Jaffe.
Yes.
Councilperson Jill Axelrod.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas Snarty.
Yes.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Yes. Before we go on, Tommy, we had two resolutions before you sat in. One to retain LaBella Electric for electrical services at Crawford Park. The other is to retain Bartlett Tree for treatment of invasive species. Would you like to be considered in the affirmative on those votes?
Yes, I, I read them, I read them earlier, the resolution, so that's not a problem, I, I'm fine with both of them.
Alright, thank you.
Okay, I'll put in the record. Alright, the next resolution?
It's not a resolution, it's a discussion, it's really a bringing up to date on the county and town tax payments that are due from the residents April 1st and with no penalty until April 30th. There's been a lot of discussion in the press. The county executive had proposed a certain program if you will. The town supervisors made suggestions to change it. The county legislature acted upon it. And we found out just this morning that the governor has issued an executive order. So everything that happened before is of no effect. The program right now is that residents may residents in hardship, and I stress in hardship, which is a change from the program passed by the county legislature. Residents in hardship will be able to pay their county and town taxes until July the 15th without penalty. Details need to be worked out, I was on a conference call with all the supervisors. We had questions for the county executive to clarify what the program is. What hardship is. Clearly for residents you know, there are certain qualifications. You A have to be a resident. You have to be receiving star benefits. And you have to have suffered an income loss due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Among other things. The question is who's gonna determine economic loss? And that's one of the questions we have. We are hoping that the county will give us a very simple form for the residents to self-certify if they cannot pay their taxes, so that they can pay till July 15th without interest. We don't know what is going to happen with that, what the result will be. But a letter went to the county executive today regarding that and a couple of other questions, mostly dealing with process. The one thing the residents should know is that they are, if they are in fact in hardship they will have a break and be able to pay their county and town taxes without interest through July the 15th. One positive effect, as, as I said last week at our special meeting we have been under an obligation to pay 60% of our county tax by May the 25th. The executive order also provides that each town may negotiate with the county executive to pay a lesser amount. We don't think we're going to need to do that. And we think that we will be able to fulfill our obligation. And we think that we will be able to fulfill our obligations. But many towns are not in that kind of financial position, and so that's a very good benefit for the towns of Westchester County.
Gary, can I just ask, I hate to interrupt, but I'm just acknowledging the unique position that Rye Town is in, and as we often act as a pass-through for obviously county, but also our three villages as well, Mamaroneck, Rye Brook, and Portchester. Has there been a discussion with those villages as far as what we're doing, and will we be able to make our obligation to them as well? Because that is, you know, very important.
The, the answer to that is, I've had discussion, brief discussions with mayors, but frankly, we guarantee, and I've said, we guarantee their obligations. And it was published in the Westmore News last week when the reporter interviewed me. Very accurate article, by the way. And we will make our obligations. The budgets for the villages will be passed this month, obviously, to go into effect June 1st. And Davey, you're, you're... When is our make-hold for the villages?
Uh, it's in June, end of June, because it's through May 31st. And then Nick, Nick provides that the outstanding uncollected taxes. And so by June 30th, we, we make them whole.
And then...
Because they have to pay us too, so, you know, we, we both hand, one hand washes the other, so if we have to wait a little bit for the payment, they can wait a little bit for the guarantee, and everybody's happy.
So I know, Lindsay, your next question will be, what about the schools?
Yeah.
Because that's coming up in September, and that's the big nut. And as I, I've said, we will make our obligations. We, you know, the schools are down the road. This particular executive order applies only to the county and town tax. And they, as I had a discussion with Dave, our obligation now has been revised a bit. It's, it's a little under 19 million. Correct, David?
Yeah.
And
And we are very close.
Well, I was just gonna ask you, Mr. Receiver of Taxes.
See, as of the close of the day, we had 14,935,263.31 in the bank. Now, I have already, in my email, Wells Fargo's payment, their escrow is 2,219,509.80. There's also lockbox payments that have been deposited tonight in our account of 509,443.22, which will total us by tomorrow afternoon, to say, this is without any mail coming in, is 17,664.216.93. So we're knocking on the door. We still have 10 days. So I feel very comfortable that we will, you know, meet our demands.
Okay.
Don't get, don't get lax, Nick.
No.
You know, close enough, there's only, it's no good in horseshoes, it's no good in, in, in make-holds either.
Yes, well, make-holds, I know, but as far as the county, I think we're good, because we still have Land America to come in, which is about a million-dollar escrow.
Yeah, I, I do.
We'll know better in a few days.
Has there been, Nick, just to follow up, I know that when the COVID situation began, we did issue that everyone should pay their taxes by mail. Has there been a holdup, or have you seen a decrease in tax payments because of that requirement, or?
No, it's probably about level.
Okay.
With that, we don't know what the final result will be to the questions that the supervisors asked. But the outline is, as I said, that people in financial difficulty will be able to pay their taxes without interest up until July 15th. And that also will apply to businesses. I urge those who ha- are watching this either live or on Facebook, or will see the broadcast on television, that if you can pay your tax, please do so, so that we are assured of making our obligations. And that will take a burden off the, the rest of the residents who are not in that position. I don't think that we ha- will have a large number of people not paying their taxes, but, and these are tough times, and the county and the towns, the state are all walking a line, you know, between being cognizant of the difficulties of our people, and at the same time fulfilling our financial responsibilities. So, does anybody else have a comment on that, or we'll, we'll move on? No more comments, okay? Yes, Lindsay, I could always count on you.
I, you know, I always have something to add, always have to add the last word. Um, as far as proceeding with this, is there any kind of resolution or something we have to pass, or is this going to be policy moving forward?
Well, interesting you should ask that, because that is the very question that I raised, and is forwarded to the county executive by Warren Lucas, who is the head of our Supervisors Association, is do we need to take any affirmative action? There are a couple of different ways to read the executive order. And as you can see, I'm sitting in the dark because I was trying to avoid my glasses.
Oh, sorry, I thought...
I'm going to turn on the light. And read that part, because the executive order states that the the laws of Westchester County are suspended to the extent necessary to require the supervisor of a town to waive payment of penalties, et cetera. So it says to require, necessary to require the supervisor of the town. So since the supervisor seems to be required to do something, the question is, what is the supervisor required to do, if anything, or is that just poorly drafted? So, we will find out the answer to that. It may just be that I make a declaration, since we are in a state of emergency. And while we're talking about that, I signed an executive order today declaring further extending the state of emergency that we previously declared for another 30 days. So it may be that I just need to issue a declaration, in answer to your question, Lindsay, which is a very good question. So, anything else on that? Okay.
Sorry, Gary, I, I do have a question. Would you summarize once again the the criteria that will be used for people who are eligible for this benefit?
Well, I gave a brief outline. Let me see. The county executive issued a, a press release today.
That was the one emailed earlier, correct?
That, yes, I emailed all of that. I emailed that to all of you.
I was just wondering if there was clarification that was issued on the call with the county executive?
There was no call with the county executives.
Oh, okay. I, I thought that the town administrators had spoken to them.
No, 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 the, the, a letter was written with our concerns to the county executive, and Alright, the, the questions that we had were, it's nice here, you know, I can be, be here, and I, I can get onto my email. We may eliminate meetings totally in the future, this is pretty cool. The, you have to have a star. You have to be receiving stars, so you have to be a resident. Escrow payments are not subject to this order. So people who pay their, their taxes through their bank will not be extended. Substantial employment income reduction is what the standard is, and we asked for a definition of that. One question that came up, and I know this may sound silly to some, but some of the supervisors were concerned that since the time to pay is extended to July 15th, what about those people who have paid already? Do they get their money back? Well, I would think not, but the question was asked. And another question is, does this, does this eliminate the law, the change in the county law that was passed last week by the legislature or run parallel to it? My personal view is that it supersedes. The law that the county legislature passed, which the county executive has not yet signed, does not eliminate, but sharply reduces interest payments to one-half of 1%, down from 2% and 1% down from 5% for the periods of May, and then again from June 1 to July 15. So there was a sharp reduction of penalty, but there was no requirement for hardship. So anybody could have taken advantage of that and paid late with a very small penalty. The, the, the current executive order by the governor eliminates, that makes it a little bit more difficult, especially for the receivers, because now you have to prove hardship, and that hardship has to be proven according to a standard that the county will establish. So, in fact, the actual wording the county executive's criteria for the determination of hard, of hardship. So, that, that adds that, and then the county executive will determine the criteria, and the receivers will need to apply that criteria. And as far as I'm concerned, I think that it should be extended to everybody or nobody, and that the receivers should not be put to the burden of determining what is a hardship and what is not. And that's why the supervisors have suggested that the residents be able to self-certify by filling out a form and signing the form that attests to the fact that they qualify under those circumstances that, that I outlined, and they have a substantial employment income reduction due to COVID-19, and that therefore, they should be exempt from the late payment of, of interest. So that will all be coming out within the next day or so. Meanwhile, if people can pay their taxes by April 30th, they should. And hopefully, we'll, we won't have to really worry too much about, about that.
Now, Gary, I just, out of concern, and there's a lot of moving parts to this, and I apologize again, but as far as businesses and property owners, in particular, small businesses, there's no provision in this executive order to address those issues, is there?
Yes.
There is, okay.
There, it's in the county executives. Basically, basically, businesses that could prove a hardship will also be exempt. So, you know, it's, it applies to everybody. And since we're on the executive order, Denise, I don't know if your Assessors Association notified you about it, but the time for file, filing petitions is also extended.
Yeah, there was, there were emails going around, yes, I saw that.
And, and so that the June 1 date is extended. I don't know if we need to take action on that, but and the Board of Assessment Review will be extended to a period of not, less than 21 days following the date for filing the, the grievance.
Okay.
So, that will be extended as well. The, any other questions on that? That's the best I can do, guys. Everything is still up in the air, in many ways, more than one. So, getting back to the agenda, in light of the fact, we have on the agenda a resolution to issue to authorize the supervisor to issue a tax anticipation note. Since we're so close, Davey, I'm gonna go with your recommendation. Should we pass this resolution tonight, or should we hold off?
I, I would just pass the resolution so you don't have to come back for a special meeting if, if a tornado hits tomorrow and nobody pays any taxes past today, so.
Okay.
This way, it's there. I, I'm not gonna proceed with, you know, me and Anthony Nash and Lauren, we're all on the same page. To, to the end of the week, we'll have collections to the end of the week, which will bring us over the, the, the the amount for the county anyway, by, by Friday. If, if something really unusual happens, we have it, so.
Okay, very good. So with that, let's go to item 5.5, a resolution authorizing the issuance of a tax anticipation note, which hopefully, we won't need to, to do. I don't see that here.
Yeah, I got it. 5.5, I got it on mine.
I don't, I don't have the actual resolution.
It says, oh, the resolution.
It's not. It's not there.
No, it's not here. It was on, it was on the agenda, but it's, there's no resolution here.
Nobody put the resolution on the agenda?
No. Oh. Where's this? No.
No.
Well, I guess we're not gonna pass that resolution tonight.
Well, can't the clerk read the resolution and have it passed?
I don't know, can?
Well, it's, um...
Yeah.
There's a lot to the resolution. I should have uploaded the whole document.
You can upload it now?
I could do it now.
Alright, Hope, you do that, and then we'll...
Come back.
Then we're gonna have a nice discussion about Doral Aron.
Well, do you wanna do that? While I'm...
Well, do you wanna do that while I'm getting?
Yeah, we'll have the discussion on Doral while you, while you, while you do that.
Okay.
This is a resolution. To. Commence a plenary action, which is a standard lawsuit against. Doral. And to retain Dan Tartalia as special counsel. To commence, to do the lawsuit. Why? Well, they owe a million dollars in back taxes.
Wasn't, wasn't that? Wasn't, wasn't that old?
Pardon me?
Wasn't that, wasn't that property sold?
No.
No, it hasn't been sold yet.
It hasn't been sold, I thought it was.
No, no, it's, it's, it's in litigation, it's in litigation. Normally, as you are aware. Towns commence tax foreclosures by law after. Three years of being in arrears. And. We could wait. On the other hand, I've discussed this with our attorneys, and another course is to commence a regular legal action. Just like you would if somebody owed you money and took them to court. And the legal action would result in a judgment, which would then be doctored against the property. And then we could foreclose on the judgment. Without having to wait, even though that would take some time, we wouldn't have to wait three years to do it. While the taxes kept, keep piling up. It's an unusual course of action. I'm not certain that we're gonna follow that exactly. Because from what I understand, the judge handling the case in. In the mortgage foreclosure is directing. The parties to. Pay the taxes. Among other things. However, I would like the authorization to do it so that. We just have that. Arrow in our quiver, and I would commence discussions. Possibly with the court, if possible. And see if that's the best course of action. So. That's why it's on the agenda. Any, any comment?
Nope, I made mine.
How long, how far back do the back taxes go? Is this just recent, or?
It's just last year. Nick would answer that.
Last year, it's only one year and this current one, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Second installments, because they made the first installment, they just didn't pay the second ones.
Yeah, no, that makes sense, because it's a large property with, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the, the question is, if you waited the three years and they owe three million dollars.
Oh, and then some, yeah, plus it'd be so far down the road.
It's a lot, and, and, and especially at a time. When we're worrying if we're gonna make our county tax payment. To have an extra million dollars in, in, in the bank is a good thing. So, this is just to authorize, I'm not even, I'm not gonna say that, that we're gonna start a lawsuit tomorrow. But. There are ongoing proceedings in, in, in court between the Arrowood owners and the mortgage holder. And I think would show that we are serious about collecting the taxes. So. Jeff, comment, or you wanna remain silent?
I remains, I choose to remain silent because this is potential litigation.
Okay.
As, as we all should.
All right, may, may I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
A second.
Hold the roll. I'm still loading up. It's taking forever.
Roll the roll, madam clerk.
Councilperson, councilperson Jackson.
Yes.
Councilperson Jaffe.
Yes.
Councilperson Axelrod.
Yes.
Councilperson Norrie.
Yes.
And supervisors are coming.
Yes. While Hope is still doing that.
Oh, it's so slow, this. Okay, I'm getting it. I was on at one thirty, four thirty, I don't know why I didn't load. Okay.
Okay, uh, policy issues for council discussion on COVID nineteen. You all have a memo, Debbie, you wanna go, go over that, please, with the, with the council?
So you have for you a section on Crawford Park, and I also included the section on Rye Town Park. The, now the, the commission had a thorough discussion of these issues. However, since the, the, the way we proceed will have an impact on the town's budget. I thought it completely relevant that, that these issues be shared with you for your views as well. So for Crawford Park, that's the immediate issue, and I invite Camille and Vic to jump in when they feel that something needs to be pointed out. There, Camille has found a steady stream of, or a steady trickle. Of nonprofit organizations that have inquired if a special discount could be. Applied to their event fee beyond the fifty percent off that we offer to nonprofit organizations. Now that we are in financial, times of financial distress. We fully expect that those requests are going to come and perhaps even be a little bit more vigorous. In requests for a, a discount, how do you feel about that?
Well, the discount, obviously, if we go beyond the fifty percent, would that cover our operating costs, or would. The town end up, you know, paying for some of the operating costs of these events?
Well, it, it could, it, it depends upon the size of the event. Because we, we don't pay, you know, when the event gets larger or more complex or involves alcohol, we'll. Engage more park attendants and perhaps even security. So, but there's, there's no straightforward answer to that question.
I mean, people, quite frankly, we have had a few requests for no charge at all. And, you know, there are, these are folks that are doing fundraisers for very worthy causes. You know, and, and they've all said, you know, anything that we have to pay for the use of the property. You know, is that much less than we're earning for the organization, and understood. But we would just like to have a standard response.
We, we need to, with, with these nonprofits, we really need to break at least even, we can't have it where it's costing us money. You know, I understand they're doing fundraisers and they're, that's all well and good, but we have to break at least even.
We need to be covering salaries and utilities, you know, every minute, Tommy.
I'm, I mean, given the circumstances, I know that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion, especially in local governments, even the discussion we had before about. Tax, you know, late fees, et cetera, we have to be concerned about our revenue source as well and our ability to function, especially since. I mean, again, in the prior discussion, we talked about how we have obligations to other municipalities who in turn have obligation to essential services. Police, fire, garbage pickup, et cetera, I would be concerned. That at this time, when we don't have a lot of revenue coming in, we've lost a significant amount of revenue because we have canceled. A number of parties there, that we would take on this additional cost. And I do, again, I hate to turn my back on certain charities at this time, but I do wanna make sure that the town remains in a good fiscal position.
We're not turning a cop to other municipalities or towns, what they might be doing?
I'm sorry, Pam, well.
Do we have a cop to what the other municipalities or towns might be doing with similar plans?
We, we haven't researched that at this point, I'm, I, I can certainly send out a, a question to. The municipal administrators group to inquire.
We don't even know if they give discounts to not-for-profits.
There are very, I would say that there are very few. Parallels to Crawford Park and Community Center.
You know, I'd like to iterate with, with Lindsay was saying, we're not turning our backs on them. You know, we, we're, we're gonna allow them to come, we're more than willing to let them come to the park. But they have to pay their fair share, fifty percent off is a big savings. And if they, you know, if they feel that they're not getting a deal, one, you know, they can always raise their, their. Because they're gonna do a fundraiser, so they're charging people, so they can charge their people a couple of extra dollars, not a whole, you know. They're getting the, they're getting a good deal for a large park. That's like no other in the community.
Now, to reiterate that, we, we already give a substantial discount to not-for-profits. And I think we should simply continue that. Let's move on to the next one, April thirtieth. I think that, that date is, has come and gone.
Yeah.
And that, and that. I think we, we need to cancel the main nights.
Yep.
Yeah, the, they, all events are canceled through the end of, the end of May and some the beginning of June.
All right, so I think we can, I think that we can leave that. That question is certainly May thirtieth.
I don't know if the governor is gonna follow what the, what the mayor in New York City is doing, because he's canceling everything up into August. You know, in July, July, I'm sorry, July, he can't, cancel everything.
I understand, we're, we're, we're not the city of New York or the state of New York.
I understand that, but, you know, you're, you're, my feeling is maybe start maybe from June fifteenth, from the middle of June. Because there, I don't, I don't see, I don't see them starting to open anything up real fast, everything's gonna probably done in stages.
And honestly, it's really tricky, because we're gonna have to figure out how to enforce social distancing within.
Eggs.
The venue and new sanitary, you know, procedures. It's, it's a lot for us to figure out on our own as well, and actually, that we have the.
And we have to, or the playground, you know, if we, if we open up, are we gonna be opening up the playground as well, that's gonna have to be disinfected? And, you know, how many times a day do you do it, or you do it just once a day? What, what are the standards gonna be?
My, I favor Erin on the side of caution. And. I would certainly, look, May fifteenth, the pause is on until May fif, May fifteenth. And I don't see the governor. Not extending that, we're already at the end of April. So, I would suggest either the June fifteenth that Tommy suggests, or at least June first at the very earliest.
It's June thirtieth, but you know I'm an, you know, ultra conservative on that.
What do you feel about that?
I, I, I feel, I really feel June fifteenth would be a good midpoint, that's just me, but I'll go with the board, so, you know.
No, that's fine, so it's good.
But I, I, I feel June fifteenth is a safe date. Because it's not fair to people to, you know, try to plan a party, then also, oh, sorry, we gotta cancel again, you know, how many people. You know, that's just me, you know, I, I just feel that.
Tommy, I'm thinking about, I agree with you, Jill?
Yeah, I agree as well, I think June fifteenth. Yeah, no, I, I do too, because it's just, it's hard to tell the future.
Right, all right, so let's, let's make that June fifteenth day. I don't even know if we need to answer the next one, what is our policy once the governor's stay-at-home orders lifted? Very cautiously.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
But I have no answer, I have no answer to the last one.
Well, this is, this is something I really would like to hear discussion on, before COVID nineteen even, even became a feature. We were facing this dilemma, which is that the Portchester Council for the Arts. Has had its summer home at Crawford Mansion for as long as I've. You know, I, I haven't been with the government that long, but for a long time. And they were never charged for the use of the facility. Camp, the, they weren't charged to, to have camp. And outside, Rybrook Rec has use of the pavilion where they run camp all summer, and we do not charge them. That's more straightforward, because this is a constituent municipality. When we, and Camille did the math, and she figured out. What the costs would be if the spaces were rented, and it was extraordinarily high. When we applied the not-for-profit discount. You know, if you have a camp that's every day for four hours. Their, their original request was for six, six hours, Camille, a day?
Yeah.
So we had, we had subsequent conversations with them where they figured out that maybe they could have their evening session someplace else. They wouldn't require taking up the entire mansion. But even when we arranged a, a lower base fee, the, the board was still. I, I would say offended by our asking for any kind of compensation for camp. So the question is, they, they've never paid for, for use of the mansion. Does, is that something that we continue? Is that something that you feel? We discontinue, how, how do we? How do we proceed?
See, I'm really offended in light of the fact that the mansion isn't, you know, a totally different form than it's ever been.
Why were they offended?
Yeah.
The, the letters seem to indicate that they feel that they've paid for it with their tax dollars.
So, so has every single entity in Portchester, Rybrook and Rhine Neck, whether for profit or not-for-profit. Have paid tax dollars. The question is. One of the big questions is, if they were not using. The facility, would it be vacant, or would it be rented out? Camille, you probably have the best answer to that.
It's a little difficult to say, but I could tell you that if they do have camp at Crawford. The mansion itself for five weeks, Monday through Friday, will not be available for any other functions.
During the day.
Would be upstairs and downstairs.
But that's until what time of the day?
Pretty much from eight until four thirty.
We had just started a nine thirty in the morning, was gonna start a nine thirty in the morning yoga class. Which was gonna run for two hours, we also were going to start a children's art class that was gonna run. Camille, am I right, two hours or four hours?
Uh, well, actually, there are two different types of classes, so one track would be two hours for younger ones, and another one would be four hours. So that would also be, you know.
There was multiple days too, right?
I'm sorry?
That was multiple days.
Yes, it was, yeah.
By the way.
I was gonna say, we keep.
Is Portchester Council for the Arts, is that a five oh one C three?
Yes.
For sure?
As far as I know, I haven't seen the documentation, but I, we can certainly request it.
Jeffrey?
Five oh one C three?
Yeah.
Probably, but I don't know.
Why don't you check the Secretary of State?
Oh, it's really simple, we just ask for their certificate.
Right.
My question is, is that the, the, the art classes that you're gonna do, that's gonna be in the art room? And then the other, they're gonna have the, the great room, and they're gonna have downstairs. There's no way they can't coincide together, because I thought that was what we were gonna try to do with this, is be able to have two functions at the same time.
You mean with the camp themselves, or?
The camp, the camp is gonna be in the great room upstairs, and they'll probably have downstairs, but why can't we have the art class going on at the same time? They're not gonna be using the art room, would they?
Yeah, they are, they will be, they are, this is what they've requested for a five-week period, use of the full great hall from eight thirty. Starting from eight thirty in the morning. And the art room and the multipurpose room, starting at eight thirty. And the art room and the multipurpose room, starting at 8:30. So there would be four hours in the morning, and then four hours in the afternoon. So.
Now, we got to pay for attendance.
Yeah.
Workers too, so, you know, they got to
My, my view is, they're not a government agency. If they are not-for-profit, then we should charge a not-for-profit rate, just like we charge anybody else.
Yeah, I mean, we've got, we've got a brand-new place now, and it's got to, you know, we, we, we got, you know, it's going to get paid for. You know, they've been there for how many years? Granted, they had it for free. As much as I'd love to give it to them for free, I don't see it feasible. They, like I said, we need to break even. We need to start, you know, collecting some fees.
My concern with this situation would be just looking at it from a broad view, and in the context of what's going on today, that kids have been pretty much shifted from place to place, and are kind of stuck at home. So I would hate to have a situation where we don't make our facilities available to the town children. However, I do agree with Tom, we have to at least break even on the costs of, you know, our electricity, our park attendance, and maybe if there's a fee, just even the at-cost, so that children can start to sort of return to some sense of normalcy. That would be great.
I'm sure they're charging these kids to come to the camp. They're not going to camp for free. You know?
Tom, 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 did they use the, did they use the building last for camps in the past?
Well, last, last, no, no, the Portchester Fair Council for the Arts has always been inside, Davey. And Rybrook Rec was outside. By the way, a, a, a member of the community who's following us on Facebook looked it up on the website, and she reports that on the Portchester Council for the Arts website, it says it's a 501(c)(3).
Good. Thank, thank you for that, much appreciated. People actually see us on Facebook, that's really great.
Yeah, we have, we have 10 followers right now.
Okay.
Good.
So the other question is, have they paid in the past? And the answer is no.
But you're not comparing like things, because the facility that was made available to them at no cost, you can't compare that to the current facility, and the costs that are involved with it. And it also sets a terrible precedent, where, how are you going to say to other nonprofits, oh, well, we're determining on a case-by-case basis which is worthy, and what the history is? I, I don't think, I don't know.
Jill, I, Jill, I think that's an excellent analysis. Because how do you determine, and how do you choose favorites amongst not-for-profits?
Right.
I mean, what if, you know, you know, we have a lot of groups that are, you know, raise funds for various illnesses, children's causes, pets, things like that, that want to have an event. And, oh, I'm sorry, you know, you get, you get charged this, and the other one gets charged that. It's, it's got to be a policy across the board, applying to everybody. If you're a legitimate not-for-profit, you get a 50% break. We acknowledge that as a policy of the town. If you're not a not-for-profit, then you pay the full rate. And we went through a very long discussion about setting the rates. We had an analysis talk. So I think that, my view is that we certainly welcome them to use the facility, and that's what it should be used for. But on the same basis as all of the other not-for-profits. And, and one more thing. In the past, the second floor was never used, it's totally unusable, so they could only use the first floor. And now they're using two or three rooms on the second floor, as well as the first floor.
Well, they, they did use the multipurpose room upstairs.
Yeah.
There's a piano in there, and they, they believe they did use that. They also, they also stored their stuff over the winter.
All right.
Yeah, but Camille and Vic have done such a great job of bringing in other businesses and organizations to use that space, and to give it away free, which would deny other, you know, entities access to it at the same time, just seems like bad business.
All right, I think we beat this horse.
Yeah.
Refresh your agendas.
The horse, the horse has been, the horse has been well beaten. So I think we're finished with that discussion, and we're all agreed that the, we, they, they paid the not-for-profit fee. And any other comments on that?
Well, I guess, for me, the question would be, and I'm sorry, I know I keep going on, but with the 50% fee, are we making a profit for the usage, or are we just covering our costs?
I don't know if we can determine that.
Yeah, that's, we're not quite sure of that yet.
We'll determine that at the end of the year.
Yep.
You know, when, when, when we, and of course, this year is a crazy year, because we're not really renting the facility. But hopefully, hopefully, if things get back to normal in the fall, we'll have some indication. And I say if, I say if advisedly.
You really need a full year to get your real, what your real costs are. You need a full year.
No, you're right, you're right. All right, can we move on?
Yep.
All right, going back, because we now have the resolution.
Oh, you are welcome. I'm sorry, I changed the amounts today when I got the notice of how much was collected, and I failed to upload it, so I apologize for that. However, it's a long resolution, but if we just want to adopt. Well, I want to ask Dave, is this still the $2,800,000 as far as the issuance of the tan? Or is it going to change?
Yeah, because, what, no, it, it didn't change, because we're still 2.4 short in, in the, in the number. Again, if there was no collections after today, then we would still need the tan, so I, it's, the number's fine.
Okay. All right, well, then that's what you would be adopting the
All right.
anticipating a tan for $2,800,000, which I could have just read without uploading this.
Okay. We've heard it, we've discussed it. We have a motion in a second.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay, and I'll call the roll. Councilperson Lindsay Jackson.
Yes.
Councilperson Pamela Jaffe.
Yes.
Councilperson Gilax Lora.
Yes.
Councilperson Thomas Nardi.
Yes.
And Supervisor Gary Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Before we get to the reports, are there any members of the public that wish to comment via Facebook or text? We would really appreciate it. We'd love to hear your questions. And who's in charge of that, Sarah or Debbie?
Either one of us. Sarah's very welcome to do it, and I've got my eyeball on the screen as well.
Okay, very good. Reports, Denise, you have a new report, or not?
Well, nothing really new to report, other than the exemptions are due May 1st. So that date is the date we've had all along, that's the date we've been indicating to anybody who's applying for an exemption or renewing an exemption. And for the seniors, we've had two robo-calls go out, one of which was today, we'll have one more next week. And then we'll start calling them personally, and calling their third-party contacts. Basically, they have to get their exemption application in, signed, dated, and completed. And that could follow with income information after that. So there is some leeway beyond May 1st, but we're still looking for those signed, dated applications by May 1st.
All right, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Nick, do you have anything else?
No, I'm just waiting for tomorrow to see what it brings.
I know, it's, for you, for you, it's like Christmas, isn't it?
I would add that the town has now obtained a secure Dropbox. It has arrived, and it will be, it's scheduled to be installed tomorrow outside of 222 Grace Church Street on the circle, right next to the front door. So hopefully, after tomorrow, that secure Dropbox will be available for residents to drop off their secure documents and their tax payments, if that's how they want to do it.
Yes, thank you, Debbie, for that. I did put that in the robo-call, that we hope to have it installed by tomorrow. So they're aware of that, and I will update the website with that information as well. Thank you.
Great, that's terrific. The, Nick, do you have anything else, Nick?
I'm all set.
You're all set?
Yes.
Okay. And Hope, your report has been filed. Do you have anything to add?
Nothing else to add.
Okay.
Have you done any ceremonies via Zoom, now that the governor said it's okay?
No, nothing planned. Thank you.
Yeah, that's, Hope and I have been discussing that for, for a number of weeks. And I could not understand why, you know, we had to do all of these things in person, and then, boom, the governor says, you don't. So, good.
Right. Drastic times call for drastic measures.
Do you have any update on the in-rem receivables? Nick or Davey?
We, we had one, but that's it so far.
One redemption, Nick?
Pardon?
One redemption?
Yes, we had one redemption. Where, it escapes my mind right now, but it wasn't a very big one. We did have some calls, hoping for a few of them to come in, the big ones, but no money yet. That's, does that date still hold, Jeff, in the courts, or is that delayed now? Over the June 8th?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Hi. In-rem's?
Yes, has, has anything changed?
For the redemption date? No, I said it way out, it's in June. I haven't changed a thing. But I think what's going to happen is, the all litigation, all foreclosures, whether it's mortgage foreclosure or an in-rem foreclosure, are going to be stayed. There'll be no, until, you know, until further, you know, notice, but I have to get confirmation of that. All evictions, foreclosures, those are all stayed during this crisis. And I think it applies to us too, the in-rem's.
Well, we could get, look, this is a little bit of a different situation, because we're dealing in property that have a minimum of three years' tax. They did not
I know.
Tax in arrears. They did not stop paying their taxes because of the COVID. Not three years ago, in some cases, four years ago. So, we'll see.
The court is making that distinction, they're just, the last thing I heard on foreclosures generally is that there will be no fore, you know, that all those actions are just frozen. But I will, I will confirm that, somehow I'll confirm it, you know, with the court as to whether it applies to in-rem foreclosures. My guess is it does, because it affects residents and commercial properties equally. We'll see.
That's, that's an important fact, because if, if it, if we don't, you know, we add to the next class in July, then we're probably going to have to go out and bar in October.
See, as of right now, I'm not saying a word to any of the respondents, because we're getting redemptions, but I doubt we'll get many more between now and the redemption date. We'll see.
I, I agree. At least we're getting, we're getting 1% interest every month still.
Yeah, for those that redeem, if they don't redeem, they have to go to sale.
Because then they get sold, yes.
Um, we, we, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm more concerned right now with the properties that are, have already just awaiting the orders to be signed. And as opposed to the ones that have a redemption date in June, and the ones that you started the proceedings on earlier.
My guess is it's going to apply to those as well, but I'll, I'll find out.
Okay. Very good. Anything else from anybody?
The financials are uploaded also on the agenda that Davey sent, so.
I have them, I'm looking at them. I'm looking at it very carefully. Thank you.
Oh, you are welcome.
And I like them when they're on the screen, because when we get them printed out, they're not, they're in black and white. The ones on the screen have all these nice colors on them.
It makes them interesting, doesn't it?
Yes, it's much prettier. So.
Gary, was there any, was there any discussion at the Rite Town Park meeting about the open date?
Yes, there, a lot of discussion about the open date. The discussion basically was, we don't know.
Okay.
Because we, we're in a position in the park where we don't know if we're going to be able to open the beach. We're talking about the, the parking fees, if any, when to start those, with the, what the, what the commission did. Normally, we start to charge fees, I guess, we have a shoulder season in April, that's gone. I think we passed the resolution setting the fees. But basically, we're going to be not collecting fees until at least May 15th, when the pause order is off. And then early in May, we'll revisit it, have a special meeting if we need to. And the good thing about these Zoom meetings is that you don't have to worry about getting all these people together like us in one place physically. You know, as long as you got your computer with you, you can have a meeting. Is that what you wanted to know, Davey? The chances are, you know, just for the council's information, and I know you're aware of this, but we're not going to be getting income, which means that any deficit has to be funded by the town and by the city. So we're probably looking at, at a red hole by the end of the year. And I think that's what you're concerned with, Davey, is that not correct?
Yeah, there's, there's that, and also, I guess, as everybody, we're talking about Crawford Park, is that I presume that you're going to coordinate the dates between the two entities. If Crawford's going to open, Rite Town Park's going to open similar dates.
Well, there, there's a difference. Crawford has a building that has events. The events at Rite Town Park are in the pavilion. So there's a little bit of a difference, and, you know, when you talk about opening, you know, I'm concerned about opening the beach. And when, even though people can go on the beach, they can't go in the water. We have to hire lifeguards. And the thing that, that has bothered us, you know, the senior staff, Debbie and myself, and, and the directors, is if you hire lifeguards, their purpose there is to save lives in an emergency. And during this COVID-19, I don't know that I want a lifeguard running to grab somebody and give them mouth-to-mouth resuscitation. So you know, we, we have to be really careful with that.
I think that, I think that best practices are going to change in that. I think that best practices are going to change in that. It's going to be a whole new first aid regimen.
Right.
There's not going to be any more of that.
I have one question. What about the restaurant? I mean, are they going to be able to open, like, for the concession stand being that they can do takeout? Are they going to be allowed to be open?
Maybe for takeout.
Well, we allow them.
Well, you have the concession down below at the beach.
Yeah.
It's not our call. It's whether the governor says, you know, restaurants open.
Well, it's also, it's also a business call, Jeff, as to even if the governor allows it. And he does allow takeout now.
Yeah, he allows takeout.
The question is, are they going to spend money on staff to make, and to make food, depending on, you know, just customers coming up from the beach to get a hot dog? I don't know.
Well, they could become entrepreneurial and create boxed dinners and picnics for families.
Encourage that.
Pick up a boxed lunch, go out on the lawn.
We actually should encourage that because, you know, like, we should do everything we can possibly do to get them to keep operating. Because they're going to invoke, you know, the force majeure clause.
Yeah, we don't have any choice about that. It is force majeure. Debbie, you should give them a call and, you know, talk about that possibility.
There may be a situation where the governor says you can open, and then they go, "There's no one really coming to the beach. We're not going to open."
Yeah, that's what I was alluding to.
Well, you have a nice day. You have a nice day. You're going to have people at the beach. You'll have, you'll have a nice warm day. You'll get people there.
But Tommy, Tommy, they can't, they can't hire staff based on, "Oh, tomorrow is going to be a nice day."
No, I understand.
They're going to have to have the staff full-time and pay them.
Yeah.
And you're going to have to pay them when it rains and say, "Oh, today's a nice day." You know, "We got people. Great. We got business."
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
Same, people may enjoy going for a walk or getting some fresh air, but to hang around.
You get a lot of walks.
It's going to happen.
Yeah.
Well, if they're allowed to open, you know, they.
Jeff, I know where you're going with that question. I don't know the answer. If they're allowed to open and they don't open, what happens? I don't know.
Well, no, we need to.
Cross that bridge.
We need to have a meeting with them because restaurants are going to start to open. There's, you're going to put, like, their tables further apart and everything. They're going to have to just, like, physically restructure.
We will.
Do we let them spill over into the pavilion so that they can properly space out their tables?
Might be.
I would say, yeah.
Nobody's using it.
Or onto the sand. I mean, we already gave them permission to expand onto the sand. Maybe that's what they do.
Yep. Maybe give them a little bigger area.
Debbie, Debbie, I think you should, I think we need to call them and set up a Zoom meeting with them and go over these questions.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Did we get anything on Facebook? Any questions from our residents?
No.
No.
Nope. Okay. Do we know the resident that submitted that answer on the?
Yes.
Yes, Janice.
It was not only a resident, but also one of our Crawford Park attendants, Janice Knickie.
Knickie. She works for Ry Brook. You know her.
Yeah.
She also works for us. Hope she works as an attendant at Crawford Park as well.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I love Janice.
She's great, isn't she?
This is the best.
Isn't she, Janice?
Janice, thank you so much.
Good worker.